I want to introduce Pastor Phil Rup, fresh to us from Bethel Assembly of God Church in Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Amen.
He's so active in our, in our community. We welcome you and if you would give us our invocation.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Gracious Father, thank you, God, for the beautiful day you've given us. We look around and we see summer transitioning to fall, and God, it's been a wonderful day. So tonight, God, we ask for your presence and your wisdom, God, as this council makes decisions for our city that impact us daily, God. Thank you for bringing us here safely, God. I'll, I'll take a special thanks for that, God. We take a moment, God, to pray for our national leaders, our state leaders, to pray for our military, God, for blessings and protection upon them, God. We pray for this council, God, and Mayor Reddiger, as he leads this council and our city manager, as they lead this meeting tonight, as they deliberate and make decisions for us. We pray for our police department and Chief Blair, for our fire department and Chief Ennis, for sheriff department and Sheriff Jordan, God. And we pray, God, that you would give safety and protection, God. It's been a big concern of ours for this city in recent months, God. We pray for protection and direction, God, and wisdom, God. Thank you, God, for those who provide that for us, God, in this city. And, God, we pray for peace and provision and prosperity for our citizens. Blessed is this time tonight, we pray that in the name of the Savior, Jesus Christ, amen and amen.
Thank you. Now, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. A call to order, the Cape Girardeau City Council. This is our September 22nd, 2014 meeting. Thank you all for being here. Roll call, please.
Wayne Vaughn.
Here.
Victor Gunn, absent. Mark Lanzotti, absent. Shelley Moore.
Here.
Harry Reddiger.
Here.
Floretta Snyder.
Here.
Joseph Lu Zorro.
Here.
Okay. The council will need a, a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to remove Bill Number 14-147.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to remove item 27.
147.
Which is Bill Number 14-147 from the agenda in its entirety. Is there discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, a, a, let's see, did you, had you moved for the adoption agenda as, with that postponed? With the postpone? Okay, now I need a, now I need a motion for adopt the agenda as, as it has been adjusted. So moved by Snyder.
Second.
Seconded by Zorro.
Mayor, do you want to postpone items 33, 34, and 36?
We can do that when we.
Do that then?
We can do that then. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, I'd like to have Mr. Cert join me up at the front of the council chamber this evening. Mr. Cert is Jim Watkins. For our presentation and proclamation. Jim, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you, Mayor. That's a good name because I've been called a lot of it.
Mr. Cert, we're very proud of what you do for us.
Thank you.
This proclamation is, whereas national preparedness month with the theme, "Reserve to Be Ready," creates an important opportunity for all residents to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. Whereas investing in the preparedness for ourselves, our families, our businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our, in our communities and in our nation. Whereas the federal emergency management agency, Ready Campaign, citizen callers, the city of Cape Girardeau, and numerous other agencies are working to increase public activities in preparing for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas all citizens of Cape Girardeau are encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities, such as our Community Emergency Response Team, CERT program, and asked to visit the website of the Ready Campaign at ready.gov to educate themselves, take more active roles in their communities, and learn more prepared. Now therefore be resolved that I, Harry Reddiger, Mayor of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby proclaim September 22nd, 2014, as national preparedness, and the whole month of September is, is National Preparedness Month, and encourage all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more repaired society and witness thereof. This 22nd day of September, Harry Reddiger, Mayor.
Thank you.
Jim, thank you for all you do, and we do need to be prepared and proactive when it comes to disasters rather than reactive post-disaster.
Yes.
So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
I think a lot of people don't, or a lot of citizens don't understand what the CERT program, but, Mr. Watkins, could you explain that, that to everyone a little further?
I would be happy and honored to.
You might be, and you could do some recruiting right now.
Well, since we have our CERT class starting tomorrow, this is a very good time. CERT, Community Emergency Response Team, is a national program started in Los Angeles about 1988, and thanks to Captain Paul Reitenstein and Assistant Chief Mark Hashider, brought the program to here about 1991, '92, and started programs in southeast Missouri. It's continued and grown. This CERT alliance is now responsible for 13 counties in southeast Missouri. So we, we have big shoes to fill, and this program is one that is mainly for citizens. It is every day home, every day work, every day wherever you are, to think that mindset that being prepared, whatever may happen, ice storm, snowstorm, car crash, I mean, it goes on and on and on. But just being able to understand what to do, how to do, and have some things ready to go. I have handouts on the back table about the disaster to-go bucket, the questions and answers in that. I do presentations, takes about 30, 30, 30 to 40 minutes, and I do presentations for anything, everything on that, and answer people's questions individually. The CERT program is a 20-hour, so it is a commitment. We generally do it on Tuesday mornings from 8:00 to 12:00, five Tuesday mornings in a row. That way, people can leave work. Employers many times realize that their employees need to keep the company functioning. So if they're prepared at home, they understand that their employees can come back to work, get the paycheck, keep things rolling. That's what it is really designed to do, to help us at home and continue our lives as normal as possible. But we, we, it's not limited to that time. We'll do weekends, we'll do whenever it fits the people's schedule.
Do you still do it up at the university?
At the present time, we are using the Cape Girardeau Public Health, County Public Health Building, as far as our classes. We do.
I have my card.
Yes.
I need, I probably need some retraining, but it is, it's, it's a great program, and you're, then you're certified.
Right.
Maybe to put on the hat or whatever, when there is a disaster, to help others.
Yeah. And the recertification, retraining is eight hours. So we generally work that in one Saturday.
Okay.
But it's just a, and I.
I highly recommend it.
I do, too. It, it's really designed for the, the people. And as far as, I can't say enough good things about Cape Fire Department, their city of Cape, wouldn't be here without them. Also Homeland Security, the Regionee, they fund us through Homeland Security grants. And it's free. The training is free. You can't get any better than that. At one time, we were able to give away packs of things. That money's gone, but we still provide the training for free. So we need at least 15 people to take the 20-hour class, and we'll go wherever and do whatever we can.
It's a great program to offer our citizens.
Very good, Jim. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Floretta, for coming and bringing that to the attention. Communications and reports, council, and I was one of several that attended a block party in the, in South Cape. There was a lot of great leadership from Councilman Moore, Shelley Moore, last Saturday, and I would like her to, to develop that on what happened there and, and what brought it about. I think, and I would commend Councilwoman Moore for her leadership in, in helping to engage residents in, in that area, and I think it's working. And I give you, Councilman Moore, a lot of credit there. So I would like you to give a detailed report on, on last Saturday's functions.
Yeah. The Cape Leaders Alliance Partnership is a group that started in 2010. My late husband was the founder of that, and at that particular time, our goal and mission was to bring different opportunities to the citizens in War II and Cape Girardeau, Missouri, totally whole. And so that's how it got started, and we wanted, we were community-minded. After the deaths, we set a, we had meetings and tried to find out what would be the best thing for the city of Cape as a whole and War II. So the group decided that the best thing right now from here and the cares of the people was to address issues that were not necessarily, not out there, but not necessarily they felt that they could go to and be, you know, get the information that they needed. On the eve of the deaths, we concluded once again that we needed to have a relationship with the city officials and the community to come together and get a understanding, because without an understanding, you really have nothing to build upon. So we came together and we decided that the best thing was to do was to bring it to the people instead of asking them to come into a building and all this kind of stuff. We thought keeping it in the open would be a best, the best thing to do. So we decided to, we had a meeting with the city officials, the chief of police, the city manager, the mayor and assistant city manager, and a lot of things came out of that meeting. A lot of questions were asked and a lot of answers were given. And so we thought to keep on going with the idea of bringing it, the community together. Many people were doing many things, but we wanted to do something that would be impactful and bring unification at the same time. So on Saturday, the 20th, we had the block party. We offered free food. We had, like I said, all the officials there. We had different agencies there, United Way, the Health Department, we had SADIs, we had the reentry group, we had the Boy Scouts and the Golden Angels. We just had numerous groups there to inform the people of what was really going on in Cape and what options and opportunities they have. I would definitely tell them about CERT, because I really, I didn't know much about it myself, but I would definitely push that. I was highly impressed with it. And so, and coming together, we had music and everything, and it was a good, good, good event. They, lots of good feedback. They want to have it again, and I told them, I said, you know, this is annually, we will not be doing this every, you know, three months, but we will do it annually. But we are going to continue to do things to bring change in War II, a much-needed change. The feedback was very positive, very, they were very enlightened, the reentry program, the, the information from the city, from the police chief and all that, they really, I got people, some came by my house again today. I got telephone calls. So it was a good event. We will be doing more, but not necessarily outside, but we will be doing more to bring unity and, and oneness to the community. There is good people in War II. And they have a heart to bring change, a desire to bring change, and so we are working together with them, not trying to, you know, do anything, but just work together as a unit to bring change into our community. So I thank you all once again for coming and supporting it and being there for them. That afternoon, they had a march, and I went and marched with them from, well, I met them in Middle Street, all the way over to Lincoln, so I wanted to be a part of that. And so we went and we had a good time singing and walking and praying, but overall, the, the feel of things is really, really good, uplifting. I, I do know and I do feel in my heart that there's, would be a great change. You know, it's just like anything else. When you till the ground, it's hard. And the seed don't get out there, if you don't till the ground, the seed will not, it'll have a difficult time going into the soil. But once you till the ground, and then you get all the debris and the grass out of the way, then you can have a harvest, and that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for, again, for your leadership. Something was brought to the attention of everybody there that, that day, and it was a result of our meeting that we had the previous three weeks before, that we, we've gotten, taken, taken action and had some results. And I'd like Chief Blair, if you would, address the anonymous line and what, what has transpired there with the first call in.
Thank you, Mayor. We, through conversations with our first meeting, the, the community told us that they would like to have a phone line that is totally anonymous, that we can't identify the caller on, where they could call in and report crime or suspicious activity and know that they remain completely anonymous. We took that suggestion back and we, we implemented that. With it having been active about a week and a half, we got an anonymous phone call with some, a report of some drug activity that was going on. They were able to identify the vehicle. Our officers were able to get out there in a timely manner, find that vehicle, and subsequently arrested two people for drug possession, and also found a loaded gun on one of the people. So it resulted in two arrests, just a week and a half into the tip line, which was something that was community-generated. It wasn't, wasn't our idea, it was just members in the community wanting to take their streets back.
Thank you very much. That was, that, some action, some, some reaction really paid, paid dividends. Probably wouldn't have captured that without the citizen coming forward. So encourage all citizens to communicate with, with staff, be it fire, police, city on any issue that we can, can help with. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could ask a question?
Sure.
How can you get access to that number, because I think that would be a great thing to get out to all the churches and help some people.
It's, it's listed on our Facebook page, and I'll give you the number now also. It's 339-6313. But people can go to our Facebook page as well and find that number on there and on our website also.
Yeah, and I appreciate you spreading that word through the Mississippi River Alliance and, and so forth.
Sure. I'll do it tomorrow.
That'd be great.
I know a gentleman, if you did it, he'd probably get it this morning.
Okay, great. Very good. Very, thank you.
Like I've told the crowds last, over the last few months, is if you wait for shots to be fired, it's too late. You gotta call us when you see something, and that's exactly what they did. They saw something a little suspicious, made a phone call, and it made a difference. And that's, that's what we gotta have. So thank you for spreading that. We're, we're planning on some other things to, to make some cards and things, to, to spread, maybe some magnets as well, but yeah, get that out, we so much appreciate it.
I think that will pay big dividends in the, in the months and years ahead. I attended the annual meeting of the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative in New Orleans last week. That's a, a relatively young group of, of mayors, not young mayors, just a young group of mayors. That, that is only three, the organization's only three years old, and, but we've made, we've made some progress, and we, we're, we're getting ourselves educated and reacting on managing the river, with economic development, with recreation, with flood control, managing floods, managing drought, ecological issues, et cetera, et cetera. One of the hot topics there, last year and particularly this year, with the coming of the new Panama Canal in 2016, we have a tremendous economic development opportunity with container-on-barge coming up the river out of the port of, of New Orleans. I'm very excited about that, and I'm very excited about the potential for Cape Girardeau in this, in this case, and we're taking some action as a group to be sure we are on the roadmap for that. 2016's coming very quick, quickly, and it is a, it is a tremendous opportunity for us in economic development. A lot of other issues, but we meet annually and, and have a voice in government and, and in states and, and back in Washington also, so looking forward to the future there. So I was unable to go to Missouri Municipal League. This will be the first one that I miss since, since I was elected four and a half years ago. But Stasimstaff went, I think our assistant city manager, Molly Hood, went, and Councilwoman Snyder went, and Councilman Zorro went. So I would like to get your take between the two of you on, and, and report on Missouri Municipal League, if you would, please.
Well, as usual, the conference the Missouri Municipal League has every year was well-organized and educational and inspirational. Plenty of good sessions, and it was at the new, fairly new St. Charles Convention Center, one of which we would like to duplicate in Cape Girardeau. I guess I would mention several of the sessions that, that I thought were very educational. One was about magistrate courts. There had three judges there about some of the new things that they are dealing with and how they've solved some of the problems. Went to a good session about the EPA and the DNR, about the upcoming regulations and what they mean to us. And one other one, I, oh, cultural diversity, which was really good. But didn't, I don't think I missed any of the good sessions, and it, it's always a valuable meeting to any council member.
Your first, your first time, Councilman Zorro?
Yeah, so it's helpful to me because I'm recently elected the first time. So I attended the, the educational ones that perhaps Floretta's attended to nine or, nine or 10 times already. But they discussed budgeting issues and issues affecting the state legislature. One thing that was noteworthy was, one of the sessions was on the revitalizations of downtown, and I was downtowns in small communities in Missouri, and I was pleased that Cape Girardeau was listed for making substantial progress and.
Right.
And what a lot of small communities would like to see happening again, so.
Good.
Yeah, it was excellent.
Okay, very good. One more from myself, and that is not this weekend, but next weekend, Thursday night and into the weekend will be the premiere of the movie that was made substantially in Cape Girardeau last year. They spent, 20th Century Fox spent about seven weeks here in September and October last year, and it will premiere next week on October 2nd through the 5th and be ongoing. There's a lot of hype about it. That was a very interesting experience for all of us, and trying at times, but I, this is coming to, to a conclusion now with the premiere, and once again, want to thank our, our staff, particularly fire, police, and, and our, all of our city staff, because Public Works, yeah, is, they had to jump when they called, and many times they didn't call until they needed it.
Last minute.
About five minutes. And needless to say, all, everybody had their own work to do, but they really responded, and want to thank everybody for their efforts there. Although it's been a year ago, we still recognize as, as a job well done, and, and thank you for that. So we'll look forward to that. Any other?
Wayne. Want to remind anyone who might be interested that the fire department is hosting a Citizen Fire Academy October 25th. It's not too late to register. I'm planning to submit my own form if I'll, if I'm accepted into the academy. It's a full-day exposure to what the fire department does, including a chance, I understand, to actually fight some fires, so that should be, should be interesting and fun, and I think it's consistent with what we've talked about already tonight, about citizen engagement on, on public safety and helping, helping understand and promote overall safety in our city. So I appreciate the fire department putting it on, and again, encourage people to, to sign up for it.
Okay, very good. Any other?
Wayne, you were, you were training, weren't you training for that with that half marathon you ran?
Something like that.
Were you out there with that? That was, had some staff out there, too.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't get you to talk about that, huh?
Right, so, okay, I will. I want, I want to thank also the, the fire department, police department, Parks and Rec yesterday for their help with the Cape Girardeau Road Runners Half Marathon and 5K. It was a great race. I, I ran it. I don't say I ran it well, but I did run it, and appreciated seeing the city staff along the route cheering and providing security and helping make sure that event was successful, and it was a great event. Lots of people from outside of Cape Girardeau, from outside Missouri, I saw license plates from Kentucky, Indiana, I think I saw one from Texas at the Osage Center, so I think that was a great, a great event. Beautiful weather. Some people ran fast, so it was a, it was a good event.
Very good. Anyone else? And staff, and then, by the way, our city manager was unable to go to MML this year because he was in a city manager's meeting in North Carolina?
Yes.
In North Carolina, so you probably have a report on that, but so any, any report from staff?
I may ask Molly to add to the reports on MML. I'll quickly talk about a couple of things. One of them, ICMA is always a great experience because you get to measure yourself against other, other cities, and like Joe said, it's really nice to have things that our city has done that, that other cities are aspiring to do, and so that's always a good feeling, and it's a good feeling to, to have them bemoan how their council can't agree on anything, and they can't get anything done, and, and we get things done. We move forward positively as a city. Doesn't mean we all have the exact same idea, but we all have the exact goal of a better city in mind, and we're moving in that direction. And they complain about their staff and how they don't have qualified staff, or their staff doesn't care, and I say, I don't have those problems, and those are big problems, because we have staff that not only is professional and does their job, they care about what they're doing, and they care about the citizens, and they care to go the extra mile because they want our city to be better. And so what a great position we're in, and, and so it's gratifying from that. And you get some good ideas as well. We, I got one of them, a citizens, some people have done some work on a citizens academy, which is kind of bringing together the fire, the police, and the other, so that might be something we want to look at, and, and I've got some other, other things, too, but, but it was a great experience and, and one that, that I wanted to mention. The other thing I wanted to mention is really Chief Ennis and his, and his way of deferring any kind of praise, of course, and, and Jim did deserve to be here tonight, we're glad he's here, but, but Chief Ennis and, and our assistant chief Hashider have been working hard on preparedness in this last year. They've worked. They've worked really hard at beginning to update our plans and they've got a committee together that's working on that. They identified early on some really critical things like sirens that we needed and we've got those funded and put up. You know, you look at what happened to Joplin and having those additional sirens is critical to the safety and preparedness. They, again, worked on emergency plans and training. They've identified some training that our employees needed, Alice Training, and just moving us forward in that direction and keeping it on top of mind. And so, they've still got some work to do, but we've been approaching that in a holistic way. And I wanted to recognize Chief Ennis and their folks for doing that and moving us forward. Because as well as things, with everything else you have to do, you don't want to take the time to prepare for something that you hope never happens. But you need to. And thank you for doing that, Chief.
Sir, I just add on to that and that is just, you've had Sharron High, the Department heads, Police Department, Alice Training, Parks, Rec, Public Works. We could probably have had the most receptive group of people towards emergency management that we had in a long time and that has really helped and made it easier.
Once I said, you can't compliment him. He has to defer it to somebody else.
Comment back to my meeting in New Orleans. Many of the mayors have experienced, the mayor of New Orleans and the people in that Baton Rouge area and the people up and down the river that experienced serious flooding that we haven't experienced because of our preparedness that we've undertaken years and years ago. But the thought that rang all the way through all of these conversations was that be more, invest money proactively. The government, city government, state government, federal government can throw money real quick at reactive, reacting to disasters. But it's really tough to invest money and even in smaller amounts to be proactive in emergency preparedness and disaster preparedness. That's just rang through and through in New Orleans and here we're talking about it tonight. And you're talking about it from your standpoint down there and we're doing it. Again, commend everybody for taking proactive action in there. Because it just reminded me of many conversations we had around the table down in New Orleans. So, you're gonna maybe have Citizen City Manager Molly Hood say anything about MML?
Thank you for catching that.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll reiterate what Councilmember Snyder and Ozuro said, that in addition to having some very educational and worthwhile classes on a variety of issues from budgeting to legal issues and whatnot, it's also just a great opportunity to meet with other city representatives from our region that, you know, we all work in relatively close proximity, but we don't often have opportunities to sit down and talk about what each other is working on and how we might collaborate more effectively on economic development issues, recreation, tourism, and things like that. So, I appreciated the opportunity to be able to meet some other people from our region. It was a good conference.
Okay, we have no public hearings this evening. Is there anyone here to purr or counsel on any item that is on the agenda this evening? Is on the agenda. Anyone? Okay, seeing none. Eric, a lengthy consent agenda.
Number 14-123, an ordinance pending Schedule A of Section 26-228 of the City Code by amending speed limits on Kings Highway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance pending Schedule A of Section 26-228 of the City Code by amending speed limits on Kings Highway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-127, an ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of 301 and 305 Mill Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from R4R UMD. An ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of 301 and 305 Mill Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from R4R UMD. Number 14-128, an ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of 890 South Kings Highway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from M2 to M1. An ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing 890 South Kings Highway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from M2 to M1. Number 14-129, an ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of 902 South Kings Highway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from M2 to M1. An ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of 902 South Kings Highway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from M2 to M1. Number 14-130, an ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property located at Silver Springs Road and Shamlock Circle in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from C2 to R4. An ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property located at Silver Springs Road and Shamlock Circle in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from C2 to R4. Number 14-131, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special tax bill for property located at 219 North Middle Street for the demolition of dangerous building under provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special tax bill for property located at 219 North Middle Street for the demolition of dangerous building under the provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-132, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special tax bill for property located at 1751 Lew Street for the demolition of a dangerous building under provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special tax bill for property located at 1751 Lew Street for the demolition of a dangerous building under provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-133, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special tax bill for property located at 1022 Perry Avenue for the demolition of a dangerous building under provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special tax bill for property located at 1022 Perry Avenue for the demolition of a dangerous building under provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-134, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special tax bill for property located at 513 Williams Street for the demolition of a dangerous building under the provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special tax bill for property located at 513 Williams Street for the demolition of a dangerous building under provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-135, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute an STP urban program agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Independence Street and Gordonville Road intersection in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing city manager to execute an STP urban program agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Independence Street and Gordonville Road intersection in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-139, an ordinance submitting Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the City Code by changing the stop signs at the intersection of Broadway and Henderson Avenue in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance pending Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the City Code by changing the stop signs at the intersection of Broadway and Henderson Avenue in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-140, an ordinance pending Schedule H of Section 26-126 of the City Code by establishing traffic lights at the intersection of Williams Street and Sheridan Drive and at the intersection of Broadway and Henderson Avenue in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance pending Schedule H of Section 26-126 of the City Code by establishing traffic lights at the intersection of Williams Street and Sheridan Drive and at the intersection of Broadway and Henderson Avenue in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-142, an ordinance pending Article 11 of Chapter 11 of the City Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, regarding rooms to lease, let, hire, or rent. An ordinance pending Article 11 of Chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, regarding rooms to lease, let, hire, or rent. Number 14-144, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. for the sanitary sewer collection and system rehabilitation projects. Number 14-145, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an intergovernmental services agreement with the Southeast Missouri Regional Planning and Economic Development Commission for planning services in support of the Southeast Metropolitan Planning Organization. Number 14-146, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a license and indemnity agreement with Lone Star Industries, Inc., DBA Bootsy, Unisem USA for improvements within the South Spring Street right-of-way in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-148, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a license and indemnity agreement with Tibbles Enterprises LP for improvements within the Commercial Street right-of-way in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-153, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute supplemental agreement number two with Crawford Murphy Antilli, Inc., for the construction phase services extension regarding the construction of tea hangers at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Number 14-154, a resolution authorizing city manager to accept a bid from Whitewater West Industries, LTV, for the construction of new fiberglass water slides at the Cape Splash Family Aquatic Center and to execute a contract for the construction of those improvements. Number 14-155, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Active Network LLC for the provision of software licensing and professional services in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-157, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute release of lien for property located at 401 South Pacific Street under the CDVG program in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-158, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute release of lien for property located at 403 South Pacific Street and under the CDVG program in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 14-159, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute two releases of lien for property located at 522 Good Hope Street under the CDVG Rehabilitation Program in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Counsel, you've heard the reading of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
So moved by Ozuro?
Second.
Seconded by Snyder. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Our new ordinances tonight, number 26, Bill number 14-143, an ordinance amending Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the City Code by establishing a stop sign at the intersection of Spartech and Broadview in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
So moved.
So moved by Snyder.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We've removed item 27 from the agenda per previous action. Number 28, Bill number 14-149, an ordinance approving the record plaid of 418 William LLC subdivision.
So moved.
So moved by Ozuro?
Second.
And seconded by Snyder. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Number 29, Bill number 14-150, an ordinance approving the right-of-way dedication plaid of Megan Drive, first reading. So moved by Bowen?
Second.
And seconded by Snyder. Any discussion?
Just want to say I'm excited to see we're accepting streets that comply with all guidelines from the city engineer. And if we would have done this 20 years ago, we would have had a lot fewer problems with streets. So, this is great.
Very good. Good comment. I support that comment. That's great. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 30, Bill number 14-151, an ordinance approving the record plaid of Radamaker subdivision.
So moved.
So moved by Snyder?
Second.
And seconded by Ozuro? Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number 31, Bill number 14-152, an ordinance appropriating funds for training and equipment expenses for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015, in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and a Southeast Coalition Law Enforcement Grant. First reading. So moved by Bowen?
Second.
And seconded by Snyder. Any discussion?
This is a great yield, $204. Gets us $37,933 for ATVs and gun racks and other equipment. And I think all the rest of the council will agree, this is in addition to what we're currently spending, not something that will come out of what we're currently spending.
That's great. Great leverage.
Yes.
Great leverage. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 32 is an ordinance that is an emergency ordinance due to the shortness of time to apply for a grant. So, it is an emergency and we'll need five votes and we're five here. So, we'll need everyone supporting this one and I will read it first, second, and third readings. Bill number 14-156, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a state block grant agreement amendment number three with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission to fund the construction and construction services of tea hanger number one and taxi lanes at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Bill number 14-156, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a state block grant agreement amendment three with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to fund the construction and construction services of tea hanger number one and taxi lanes at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Bill number 14-156, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a state block grant agreement amendment number three with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to fund the construction and construction services of tea hanger number one and taxi lanes at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport.
I move that we accept the first, second, and third readings of Bill number 14-156.
Motion by Snyder?
Second.
And seconded by Bowen. Discussion? And I'd like our city attorney to detail why this qualifies for an emergency timing and legal.
Okay, I'd be happy to. Under Article 3.15 of the city charter, one of the four criteria for using an emergency provision is when the measure is one that will act toward the immediate preservation of public health, property, safety, or morals. And this is one that would act toward the immediate preservation of public property. And so, for that reason, and it was stated in the ordinance, that that is the reason it is eligible for emergency readings and immediate effectiveness upon adoption.
Okay.
The construction will fill a desperate need that we need down at the airport for those tea hangers.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, emergency has passed. Okay, appointment to the Board of Appeals. And as we discussed earlier, it is going to be necessary to postpone this appointment. I need a motion to the same.
So moved.
So moved by Ozuro and seconded by Snyder. And we will undertake that appointment at a later date. Those in favor of postponement, aye?
Aye.
And opposed? And 34, an appointment to the Board of Examiners. And again, per discussion relating to further study of the Board of Examiners, need a recommendation to postpone this appointment. So moved by Bowen?
Second.
And seconded by Ozuro. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Appointment to the Cape Girardeau Goes Green Advisory Committee. And the discussion there resulted in a recommendation for Chris Mackey to become a regular member and Michelle Otte to become an ex-official member.
So moved.
So moved by Snyder?
Second.
And seconded by Ozuro. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And appointment to the Golf Course Advisory Board. And the Advisory Board and Parks and Rec have recommended a delay there. So, again, we're asking for a motion to postpone that for a future date. So moved by Ozuro?
Second.
And seconded by Snyder. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, is there any other business to come before us? Boy, that's a long time. I guess Lenzadi isn't here this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved by Ozuro?
Second.
Seconded by Snyder. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.